So, um, as opposed to a more traditional Q and A session or more formalized debate, tonight's event is a candidate forum that will provide an opportunity for candidates to take turns responding to CPAC's questions. So Board Member Jenny Sheehan will be keeping time for candidates' answers, which should be capped to four minutes apiece. And for candidates, please ensure that you keep an eye on Jenny's Zoom window. She will indicate a one-minute warning for you as you wrap up your remarks. Also, we're planning to alternate the order in which we ask our questions of candidates. And and we decided to ask questions of candidates in alphabetical order by their last name. And then, just for clarity for our audience, these questions have not been shared with the candidates in advance to hearing them now with us this evening. So we know that each candidate has a campaign website set up, and we will post in the chat the URLs for those websites so that our attendees can follow up directly to learn more about their platforms and contact the candidates with any specific questions. We are also recording the Zoom forum. Now we're recording. A link to the recording will be shared with the Milton Access TV folks and we'll also post it on our CPAC website. So please share this link with town residents you know who are unable to join us live this evening. And lastly, we ask that all attendees, please keep yourself muted so as to not accidentally interrupt the forum. And thank you all for being here tonight. Board Member Julie Farolo has our first question.
Hello. Please tell us why you decided to run for a seat on our Milton Public School Committee and share with us what you specifically have accomplished in support of students in our community. Lizzie, we will ask you to answer first, followed by Dan, and then Amanda.
Thank you, Julie, and thanks to everyone on the CPAC Board for hosting this great forum. Really important opportunity each year, so very pleased to be here tonight. For those who don't know me, my name is Dr. Elizabeth Carroll. But as you see, most people call me Lizzie. I have two daughters who go to Tucker. They're in first and fourth grades. And my family absolutely loves living in Milton. My husband, James, and I feel really lucky to be raising our family here. So I am serving on school committee currently. I was first elected in 2021, and I serve as the school committee chair this year. I have had my whole career in education, over 20 years now. I started out as a high school English teacher. I've worked in a central office. I've worked as a professor and a program director at a university, and now as a program director at a nonprofit in education. I think all that experience has helped me to be effective in my first term as a school committee member. I've also been serving on town meeting for a few years before running for school committee. So the reason I'm running for reelection simply is to help us maintain our positive momentum as a school district. I think Milton is heading in the right direction as of this year. And we're building on our strengths. We've identified clear priorities for moving forward. I want to help us see that work through. So there are a few main things that I commit to doing if reelected. They basically fall into three big categories. The first is just to sustain the collaborative partnership with our new superintendent that will support the implementation of the priorities that have been identified through our thoughtful process of both staff and community input. Hopefully, you've seen opportunities where you've been welcomed in to engage in that process throughout the past year. Our school committee has put a lot of effort this year into building a positive working relationship with Dr. Burrows, and we see that paying off. So I feel that now is the time to stay focused on that work so that we can work together with him to deliver on the priorities that he has identified, which I'm sure we'll talk more about, do include a number of specific recommendations and goals in the area of supporting students in special education. The second thing that I intend to do if reelected is to continue my way of serving on school committee. So I try to be a bridge builder. I try to take a pragmatic, open-minded approach to solving problems through teamwork and listening. And I think this includes my work trying to build a climate of real engagement, deep engagement within the school committee, where we're all able to fully contribute our talents to the work that we have before us and to work as well as partners with our colleagues in town government to ensure that our students are getting access to the support they need to be successful. Final piece is to complete the work that we have underway. That's to strengthen our school committee governance in order to support our superintendent's focus on building better systems. Because I think we've identified numerous ways that it's really a better systems that we need in Milton to become that district where every child can thrive. So there are a number of ways we're doing this across the school committee's main responsibilities of policy, budget, and hiring and evaluating and supervising the superintendent. I may have an opportunity to speak to more detail on some of those later. But it's really through all of that work that I've been doing my best to serve the children of Milton this past three years, and I hope to earn one of your votes to continue. Thank you.
Julie, am I up?
You are up.
Okay. Thank you, CPAC Board, all the parents that are here today or tonight for this important candidate's forum. I'm honored to be here. This is the second time that I'm running for school committee. And I feel that I have a lot to offer the school department in the town of Milton. I've lived here with my wife, Tahung, for 14 years. We have three children, Vivian, who's a sophomore in the high school, Regina, who's an eighth grader at Pierce, and my son, George, is a fifth grader at Cunningham. I've also been a soccer coach, a school soccer coach for about six years. And I've also volunteered whenever I had the opportunity to volunteer at my children's classrooms. And I think that that volunteer and giving back to the Milton schools, I want to take it to the next step. So I believe that I have a unique set of experience and skill set that none of the Milton School Board members have. You know, the school budget landscape has changed dramatically in the past few years, and strains are being placed upon all town departments and not just the school department. So, you know, the current board consists of educators, nonprofit employees, a director of a charter school, and one businesswoman. These professions and the members are very admirable, just to dedicate their time and efforts to bettering our school. It's commendable. But I bring a different perspective and experience in this race than my fellow candidates do not have. I have public and private finance and auditing experience. I'm a numbers guy. That's what I do for a living. So like I said, I'll bring a critical financial thought and foresight to the Milton School budget that needs to be looked at through a different financial lens, and that's what I bring to this race. I also have a special needs child, George, who has autism. And I sit in the same CPAC parent seats that you do now. I know how confusing special education process is to advocate for your child's education, to get the needed services, and having your child placed into the right programs. I know how frustrating that can be. I want to be that voice that speaks for you and your child. Let me help the administration understand your concerns and get everyone on the same page educating your child. The Milton Schools are fortunate to have, you know, a new superintendent and a new special education director who are amazing, and they have identified areas that need to be addressed. And I believe with my financial background, I can help stretch our limited resources even further. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here tonight, and I humbly ask for your vote on April 30th. Thank you.
I'm guessing I'm up.
You're up.
I am up. Thank you, and hi. My name is Amanda Sario, and I am a 20-year resident of Milton and the very proud mom of three boys, one of whom has special needs. I've been involved in the Milton Special Needs Community for about 13 years, starting when my son was in the integrated preschool. And since then, I've been involved with the Milton CPAC, serving on a number of roles. I was the chair for three years. I'm also a co-founder of Milton Sports for All, which is a parent-run inclusive rec league. And for the past two years, I've had the privilege of being on the warrant committee and serving on the school budget subcommittee. I'm running for school committee because I feel like I have a unique set of experiences that I can bring to the town. As a special education advocate by profession, I work with a diverse group of kids with different learning and social needs. And I also work with their families and educators and administrators. And this has really given me great insight into the supports and guidance that they need to really empower these students to meet their success. In my role on the warrant committee, I've gotten to understand the town budgeting process, and I recognize the real challenges that we have in financing town services as well as the schools. So if elected to school committee, I am going to passionately focus on two things. One is to continue to build an inclusive school system that focuses on the success of all of our students. And two, I am going to advocate for the school budget. And in doing so, I'm also recognizing the importance of balancing the financial needs of the schools and the towns. One thing that my friends often laugh at me about is that I constantly am talking about inclusion, inclusion, inclusion. And so in voting for me, know that you would be voting for inclusion to the greatest degree possible for all students. Thanks.
Thank you. Board Member Kathleen Jackson will be asking our second question.
Question number two. Given the inherent challenges with the town facing a level service, facing a level services budget for the upcoming school year, and our knowledge that the current evaluations of students with special education services is soaring, can you please elaborate on your vision for how the school committee can best improve educational opportunities for all students in the coming year, including students requiring special education services? In this round, we're going to start with Dan, and then we'll go to Amanda and Lizzie.
Okay. Thank you for that question, Kathleen. Level service budget in this time that the town faces overall and the needs that the school has put forward to get additional resources and new hires. I believe it's $1.1 million that the school department is looking for to be funded. I think that being able to be in a position of, you know, with my experience here, going through the budget line item by line item expense by expense, I've done this before with other school districts throughout the Commonwealth where I could go, we could go through and identify expenses that are being, you know, that are basically being paid for in different areas of the school budget. The school budget is $68 million. That's a lot of money. It's about 70% of the overall town budget. There are a lot of programs that are being paid for and also consultants and contractors that I think that there are a lot of duplicate expenses. So with my, I have 30 years of auditing experience. If I could get that budget line item by line item, working with the administration, I'm sure that we could find that $1.1 million to to get the services and the professionals that Superintendent Burrows has put forth in his budget. So that's what I would do. I would definitely use my professional experience to work with the administration to identify those spending overlays that need to be addressed and brought down to the the $1.1 million that has been put forth by the administration. Thank you.
I'm ending up. I'm up. Okay, sorry. Thank you. I think it's a tough question. You know, our budget is always an issue. And as I mentioned, you know, the resources of our town are limited. We only have, you know, our main source of revenue is our property tax. 85% of our school budget is staffing. And so it makes it very difficult to find areas to cut. You know, we, being part of the warrant committee, I've seen the school budget, and I understand the difficulty in finding funding this year. You know, the school committee came to the warrant committee and had a proposal for cutting into the budget for the Chromebooks and a service, I think it was a floor polisher for the floors, that would have given them some of the money to fund these needed positions. And I think as we look at these positions, I think you also have to look at it from the standpoint of, you know, in business terms, opportunity cost. So two of, three of the positions are reading specialists that we need and adjustment counselors. And, you know, to be honest, I would be curious if I looked at the IEPs across the district, how many hours our individual adjustment counselors and reading specialists are already accounted for on an IEP? And I'm going to guess that there are more hours than they possibly could put forward. And so what that says to me is if our students who require that aren't getting those services, they're either, they're either not, they're either going to be moved on to an IEP if they aren't already, or they're going to fall further behind. And, you know, it's the law that we provide these services to our kids. So if we don't provide them in town, then we will have to provide them elsewhere, and that means funding our kids out of district. So I think we have to look at creative solutions like the school committee came to us with. Do you look at saying, you know what, for this year, we could cut back on our Chromebook budget and put that towards staffing? You know, historically, we have not put positions against capital spending, but I think that, you know, sometimes you have to be creative when the needs are there. We still have children who are trying to make up for learning loss from COVID. You know, the fourth and fifth graders were the little ones who were just getting the initial reading instruction when COVID hit. So our budget will always be a very difficult thing that we have to deal with. And so I believe that in this case, you have to fund these positions that will benefit these students who have had the learning loss and preclude us from having to send them out of district at a much greater cost. So I think the things we have to do are be creative, like our current school board is, and continue to find creative ways to fund things when we aren't in a year where there is no override. Thank you.
So I guess I'd like to start out by just reassuring people here. As I've said last week at the warrant committee, you know, we're not giving up on solving this problem of these top identified priority needs and the fact that we've not yet been able to secure the funding for them for next year. But we are continuing to explore how we will be able to figure that out. Well, it's not an option to not solve this problem. So just to put that out there. I think what I'd also like to take a step back and do is highlight, I know it's really, for me, it can be very challenging to take a step back and, like, take a deep breath almost when we're in this challenging situation of having a level service budget and knowing that, you know, it requires a lot of this extra effort to figure out how we will address our clear needs that we have as a district. One thing I did just want to put out there is our level service budget, which has been approved at this, by the warrant committee, and we'll go before town meeting in May. It does include key positions that we were able to add in last year, which is a really good thing. We were able to add in a preschool coordinator full-time. We hadn't had that position before. That's really huge. That person is able to dedicate their time to making sure that our integrated preschool program works as effectively as it possibly can. We were able to create an ADA 504 team chair position that didn't exist before that. We were able to add a middle school adjustment counselor, two board-certified behavioral analysts, and, you know, another high school special education teacher, and several more positions. We were able to add those positions in to last year's budget, and those are being carried forward. So, you know, let's stay focused on some of the progress that we have been able to make, even as we're also focused, of course, on the needs that continue to go unmet and that we continue to fight for. As far as the inherent challenge with the budget, you know, Dan is right. It's important to think about efficiencies. And actually, we've done that as a school committee in our proposal for this next year FY25 budget. We identified some efficiencies specifically within special education. So we've proposed to add two positions that would be net neutral, that would be budget neutral. And that is to hire administrative assistants who would be able to take over the scheduling of team meetings and a lot of those logistical tasks that would allow team chairs to then meet the timelines that have been cited in the coordinated program review from last spring that would allow them to perform the academic evaluations that is their responsibility to do. That is work currently being done by contracted service providers. So when we hire those administrative assistants, it will offset their time and allow our team chairs to be effective in their roles. Additionally, we are proposing to hire an evaluator psychologist who will be able to perform psychoeducational evaluations that are currently being performed by contracted service providers as well. So we are looking for how can we sort of bring more of this work into our district to make sure we're able to therefore coordinate it in a systematic way so that it has the best impact for our students and families? And it provides our educators with the support they need to get their jobs done as effectively as possible.
Thank you. Board Member Jenny Robertson is up with question number three.
Hey there. From your perspective, what are some areas of programming or services across the district, either during the school day or after school, where improvements can be made to ensure inclusivity and accessibility to all students, including those with special needs? And do you have any ideas for improvement that would promote inclusion? We'll start with Amanda, and followed by Lizzie, and then Dan.
Thank you. I would say that in looking at programs and services, I think one area that has historically been difficult for families has to do with after-school programming specifically around the community schools. I think for many years, particularly for families of children who have, you know, what have historically been called behavioral challenges, I think they are discouraged from having their children attend, which is, which is, which is really a shame because I think it just, these are opportunities for our kids to feel more included in the community and really having an opportunity to practice their social skills and for other kids who aren't necessarily in special ed to get to know kids who are different than them in an environment that isn't academic, that it's play and it's sort of lower stakes. So I think that's probably one of the biggest areas. I think as parents, particularly I'm a parent of a child who struggled with that, who struggled with emotional regulation, we didn't feel like we had those opportunities. We didn't feel like that we had the opportunities to participate in any sort of extracurricular activity or anything socially, even, you know, to the degree of something like the Wolf Den for teens. You know, I don't think that as a town, we do as much as we can to promote inclusivity and to promote a feeling of community among our kids. So I think those are some of the areas that we could look at. I think we could have less restrictive policies around the community schools and the after-school programs. I think that we could do more and possibly work with Parks and Rec on having
What?
Town programs.
No, no.
And having town, sorry, can I keep going? Having town programs that are supportive of our kids who might need a little bit of extra support. As I mentioned, some parents and I, in the past few years, founded an organization called Milton Sports for All with that intent of having it be an opportunity for kids to make friends, have fun, be in the community in a supported environment. But it's not specifically for students with special needs. It's for all kids so that we have that, so that we're promoting that inclusivity. I think similarly, things like the Wolf Den. How do we do it so that teens can go, kids who are out of district have the opportunity to come in and feel a part of the community and, and make friends and have social opportunities? So I think that there are a number of places, and I think what it really will take is a concerted effort between the schools and the town and parents. You know, a lot, a lot falls to us, but I think we know our kids best and we know where our kids would thrive. So I think finding those opportunities where the schools and the town and the parents could come together to support rec and fun for our kids is imperative. Thank you.
Okay, next. Amanda, I really agree with everything you just shared, and you spoke a lot about some important, great ideas for what can we be doing in the sort of after-school and community space? I think for this question, I'll probably focus a little bit on what we're planning and working on in the schools in terms of like the instruction and support that our students are receiving during the hours that they're in school every day. You know, one thing that's very important is we, as a district, have made a commitment to build out a multi-tiered system of supports. And that is something that does take time and coordination. I feel we have the team in place right now to accomplish that. And so as a school committee, we're now working to, yes, try to get them the budget, the, you know, the support that's required to build that out. I want to make a plug. I hope everybody has seen Dr. Burrow's priority report by now. It was released a couple of weeks ago. It's the result of his year-long entry plan where he had meetings, survey data, listening, learning sessions, and so forth to understand what are the concerns and the desires and hopes of our community, including staff as well as families. And the first area that he identified as academic excellence in his report, the first subtopic under academic excellence is special education. And he has three specific priorities that have been identified there. And because of the way that the school committee and Dr. Burrows were trying to work together to build out these systems for our district, you know, these are really question, these are really priorities that I share. So one is to establish a response to intervention model used with fidelity across the district. So that is an area for improvement. It's services that we, that we need to be able to provide sort of consistently. We need to improve our Um, we need to improve our general and special education coordination. That was something identified last spring in the independent comprehensive report as well. Um, we need to research out of district placements and better understand where students' needs are not being met. So these are priorities that have been identified um that I think if we can address them, it will work to promote inclusion, to promote success um for all of our students, including our students in special education. Um, the second priority area after academic excellence is climate, culture and wellbeing. And we know that there are so many important pieces under this topic as well that directly relate to supporting our students to feel a sense of belonging in school and to feel like they can thrive academically, but also socially and emotionally. Um, and so there are a number of priorities that have been developed there as well. Um, but I think the role of the school committee, um, as I've come to understand it through serving on the school committee, it really is to get a leader in place that has the capacity to deliver on the vision that you have as a district. And I think that's what we now have. Um, not just with Dr. Burrows, but with Danielle Wetmore, the new director of student services, who is working diligently to implement a number of the priorities um specific to her department. Um, and you know, there are some of the specific things there that I could speak to as well. Um, but I think this is really the important question is like, where are we headed? You know, what improvements do we expect to make? And then we need to hold ourselves accountable for making them. So the first step there is clearly outlining, you know, what are these priorities? What direction are we going? And that is um what we're in the process of doing, what we've just been doing. Thanks.
The worst thing about going last in these questions is that um you guys still on my ideas? No, I'm just kidding. The uh, the, the inclusion is is so important in special ed and especially to the students and parents. Um, I know that my son gets great joy in the after school programs and in the, the different classes that are offered. Uh, he feels um like that's the, the best part of his day, the, the, the cast enrollment and he picks, he picks his um his classes that he's interested in, his Legos, crafts, um Pokemon. That gives George the ability to, you know, make and forge new friendships. So I think that in, you know, building out that program to offer more uh classes to to not only uh, you know, the regular stu- the, the students that are are enrolled in it, but also the, the special needs. I think that we should be tailoring special classes towards them. I know George gets a, a lot out of swimming. Um, fortunately, you know, Milton doesn't have uh, you know, a, a public swimming pool other than um Cunningham Pond, but he loves to swim. So the thing that doesn't cost a lot of money would be to look towards uh student mentors, especially um, you know, the student athletes that are um enrolled in, in, in the students. The volunteer uh program could be expanded. Uh, there could be incentives for varsity football players to adopt a, a special needs student to attend games, to attend practices, to get to know like literally how to play hockey, how to play, you know, football and soccer and field hockey, uh volleyball. I, I, I think that sports is, is underutilized in the special education um uh field. And I, I just wanna commend Amanda for starting Sports For All. What a fantastic, needed uh program uh that the town is so lucky to have. Um. I would al- I, I would also uh say that, you know, parents uh and senior citizens who have retired, that's somebody that is an underutilized resource that, that, that that the school department should be uh trying to promote and recruit uh former educators, special, special, you know, needs educators that um really want to still be involved in the community and to give back. So I, I, I would look towards, you know, starting those, those programs, uh recruiting volunteers that the students uh themselves, the music program, it's a fantastic opportunity for special uh needs students to, to be included. Um. I, I, I could go on and on, but I, I, I just think that with the strong leadership that the school co- committee can foster with the administration to again what Lizzie just, just mentioned, you, you need a leader to spearhead that, that, those programs and it, it, it should be done. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, our board member Rob Milt has our final question of the evening.
Thank you. Um, as you all are likely aware, the district undertook an independent program review of a special education services this past year, this last school year. Um, there were many specific strengths, concerns and recommendations made in that report. Some of those recommendations uh that CPAC noted um uh were uh a review of the French immersion program for equitable access and services from a special education standpoint. Um, and uh improved professional development and annual training and state and uh um a, a look at uh existing staff, staffing caseloads. And those were just um a, a few of several. We are curious what reflections you may have from that report and what recommendations you would prioritize advocacy for and why. Um, really uh based on those recommendations that decided and also in other parts of the report. Um, so we'll start uh with Lizzie and we'll go uh followed by Dan and then Amanda. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. It's an important question because we have a tremendous resource in that report. Um, and it's really important that we use it to inform decisions about how we move forward. So I'm really glad to see that it is being used. Um, and you know, I definitely agree with um the priorities that you've uplifted. Um, and I, I think additional ones that I noted um that I think are so key include communication um and the ability to, you know, strengthen our communication um both internally and externally. Um, I think that's something that we know we need to improve and we're in the process of doing some things for that. And also just, I, I, I think the report noted the lack of systemic approaches that we have um within our s- special education program. I think that's a larger problem that we've had as a district uh that we're also trying to address as well. Um. I agree with the idea of really looking at our French immersion program and how it can be improved to be more inclusive. Uh, both of my children are in the French immersion program. Um, they are benefiting greatly from being able to participate in that program. Um, and you know, I know that there's more we can do to really coordinate um how students who are receiving special education services are able to thrive in that program as well. Um, so I, I think that that is an area that our current um directors are looking at, are working on, uh both student services and world languages. Um, and I expect that we should be able to make some progress in that area um in short order. I mean, it's when you're talking about specific kids in real time who are not getting support they need, that's, that's um, you know, it's, it's not acceptable. So that is something that we need to continue to do better. I think for PD and training also, as you mentioned, um, it's critical. Having been a teacher, um, you know, teachers deserve and need quality and coordinated professional development. That's job embedded. And what that means is it's relevant to their day to day and it actually helps them do the job before them, helps them improve um in, in a consistent manner. Um, if the professional development isn't doing that, it's not worth it. Um, and so that has, another thing has been identified in the priority report as something we're focused on going beyond, you know, what has also, of course, here been identified in this um special education report. The, the last point I wanna make is it, again, for me, this comes back to stability and our ability to retain talented staff. Um, and to move beyond the churn of turnover that we've had over the past few years. Um, you know, for the first two years I served on school committee, we experienced a lot of that at the highest levels of our district leadership, extremely challenging. I, I won't sugarcoat that. Um, we experience it throughout our team chairs as well at this, you know, it's very destabilizing and very challenging uh to maintain services when you have that level of turnover. So my hope is that we are now in a better place where we have a strong leader who's assembling a strong team. And it's with this strong team, um, and with a school committee that carries forward some knowledge of what's been successful that we're able to kind of move forward in a stronger place going forward, informed by that report and all the other data that we're collecting as a district as well.
Uh, thank you, Dan.
Yeah, th- thank you for that question, uh, Rob. Yeah, the French, French immersion program is, is fantastic. It's, 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 my two daughters are enrolled in it and when it came time to um ask George and see if George uh could be in, immersed in, in the French immersion program, um, we chose not to. Uh, it, it not because the program wasn't fantastic. And uh, I, I think what Rob is sitting on is, and, and in the report is the there, there seems to be some barriers too with, with the French immersion program on uh including uh special needs student and that, that needs to be uh looked at very uh in a hard manner to try to get some uh, you know, some solutions into en- enrolling special needs students in the French immersion immersion program. As I said in, in my opening, like there appears to be a lack of communication and understanding regarding, you know, the description of programs and which programs are offered uh to, to um, you know, special needs students. Uh, a, a, a lot of uh parents that were interviewed in that report, you know, they, they claimed that the, the details of the programs are almost like secretive. And if the information is only uh being shared to a select few. That seems to be one of the biggest findings too, that, that there's also a lot of confusion as to who is responsible for various aspects of a student's uh IEP in, in the process that surrounds it, a lack of clarity. Uh, uh, another big finding in special ed department regarding staff allocation and how to best support those students um and, and make sure that they're able to meet their goals and objectives and, and progress in their education. Um, so I also am, am, am glad to see that there was a portion of that report that was um they highlighted that all these processes have to be driven by data. It has to be measured. It has to be uh looked at i- in order to see what is working and what is not. And so with that data, it, it's, it's just like finance. It, it gives you the tools to understand what is working and what isn't. Um, so that report was, I think it was a hundred and, and, and four pages and, and, and I, I read it. It, it was, it was eye opening. And I, I wanna commend the, the school department, the, you know, the, the administration for going out and getting that comprehensive uh review because it, it, it gives us, you know, it measures where we are now and where we should, should be. And like I said, with, with the leadership that's been put in place with uh Superintendent Burrows and with um Danielle Wetmore, I, I think that those goals can be uh with the, with the, with the strategic plan uh can be accomplished. So, and, and, and I, I one hundred percent su- support that report and its findings. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Amanda?
To quote Dan, all the good answers were taken. Um, no, I, I read that report fully as well and I found it encouraging in the sense that it gives our um new administration a roadmap. Um, I found it somewhat discouraging in that I think I was first on the CPAC in twenty fifteen and those are the same issues that have been raised consistently in the past, what is that now, nine years? So that being said, um, a few things have been talked about already. I, I uh, you know, talking about French immersion sometimes is, as I've said to people, it's sort of like touching the third rail in Milton. It's an amazing program. It truly is. But to, to um Dan's point about data, the part that is discouraging is that I think it's somewhere between three and eight percent of kids. Three and eight percent of the kids in French immersion are on an IEP versus in gen ed, it's closer to twenty percent. So there's something that needs to be looked at and changed. Um, I think there's, we need to look at ways to make it more inclusive and to find ways to encourage parents to um, to enroll their student if they're on an IEP in French immersion. I would say equally as important though is oftentimes, it's not until a student several years into French immersion that they might realize that their student has a learning disability and a reading disability. And I think we also need to begin to think of a clear path out for some of those parents, if that's a decision that they think is best for their child. Um, and additionally, within French immersion, continue to have um resources for students who might have learning challenges. So if there is a reading specialist, that there's somebody who it can read French, you know, if that's the language of instruction. So I think that that's very important. The other thing that I think is important, um, a lot of things were touched on, but maybe I'll touch on the uh, um, piece around improved PD. Um, a new IP is being rolled out. And so I think having all staff, all teachers, um, service providers, um, understand the changes in the IP. Um, and, and, and how, what their role is in filling out the IP. I think that that will be important. I think PD around um IDEA, you know, so that teachers and service providers and staff understand really the the rules and the laws around IDEA and what um, you know, what the rights of students with special needs are. Um, I don't think that anybody is um I think sometimes you don't know what you don't know. And so when we are talking about something like this and if they're they're teachers and service providers who are working with students with special needs, then that's, that's very important um instruction that they need. Um, and finally, we talked about this a bit. Uh, the staffing caseloads, you know, when we're looking at reading specialists, math interventionists, adjustment, adjustment counselors, um, SLPs, OTs, you know, we are very, very lean. And so I think we really need to look at that and, and determine um what the true staffing caseload is and work with Danielle to begin to look at what that means for planning um moving forward to support the needs of, of all of our students. So I think it was a phenomenal report. I think that there was a lot that we could learn from it. Um, and I think, you know, Danielle and Dr. Burrows are, are lucky that they have a roadmap um to follow moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so with the remaining couple minutes we have left, um, we're going to invite each candidate to give a very brief closing statement. Um, so pre, please limit to about maybe a minute and a half. Um, so we'll have Dan first, followed by Amanda and then Lizzie.
Again, I wanna thank uh CPAC, uh the parents, the students, uh Milton, uh administrators and teachers that are, are attending this important forum. Uh, I'm honored to be here. My candidacy, as I stated before, is one that is not um in, immersed in, in education. Um, it's one that is, that is um one that comes from the financial and auditing field. Um, I bring, uh, like I said, I bring that, that experience, a different view of uh, you know, programming and, you know, how to, how to finance it to take the needs of the school uh system that um Dr. Burrows and um Danielle Wetmore envisioned for, for the special ed uh program. And, and, and go through the bud- And, and, and go through the budget, like I said, it's $68 million. There's overlap and spending. I know I can find it. I, I have that unique experience, experience that would, you know, bring to that board someone who, who can identify that, who, who has done it for a living. So I humbly ask for your, for your vote on, on April 30th and, and I thank you for, for inviting me to this, to this forum. Thank you so much.
Didn't realize that I was still unmuted. My apologies. I think I'm next, correct? Yes. I, I echo Dan. Thank you all so much for inviting us and giving us the opportunity. I know that everyone's time is limited, so to take an hour out of your evening to hear from us is, is appreciated. I, I think I would just circle back on the two things that I, that I addressed in the beginning. One is the idea of inclusion. I think it's very important for, for all of our kids and to find opportunities for as much inclusion as possible for, for all of our students, including bringing, finding ways to bring our students who are out of district back into the community in some way, shape or form. It could be an after-school activity or better yet, develop programs that will allow our kids to come back to the community and really be part of Milton. I think the second piece is my focus on the budget, but, you know, understanding that we are, we are in a difficult position in this town. And so recognizing the need to constantly balance the needs of the town with the needs of the schools, I think is very important. And I think that I bring that experience to bear. So I'm hoping that when you all go to vote for Amanda Sario on April 30th, that you will know that your vote is inclusion for all students to the greatest degree possible. Thank you.
I'd just like to echo the thanks to CPAC for hosting this great conversation, to all of you for taking the time to, to listen in and for all that you do to support your own students, to support our system here in Milton Public Schools. And, and that does include holding us accountable to do what we need to do, which is be a system where every student can thrive. I'd like to thank Dan and Amanda for running. I know it's not easy to put ourselves out here and it's a big commitment. So honored to be here with both of you. You know, again, my purpose for running is to just help us maintain some stability to keep this forward momentum. We've elected six new school committee members since 2021, me being one of them back then. I'm looking at things like next year, we're going to bargain our contracts with our unions once again. I'm the only member of the school committee right now who participated in negotiating that full cycle. The last time that we were successfully able to work with our unions to negotiate contracts, that's one example of something I'd like to be able to help us do again and carry forward the knowledge in order to do that. So, you know, my, my belief is we have the ingredients here in Milton Public Schools and we're poised to fulfill our promise. That's what we need to do. It is within our reach to be, to be a district where every child thrives. And I hope to earn one of your two votes on April 30th to, to stay at it. And I'm going now to the school committee meeting that starts in two minutes. So thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you all for a great forum. I did see that there were a few questions in the chat that will forward to the candidates to answer on their websites, email or social media. And good luck to our candidates. Thank you again for coming in. Please remember to vote on April 30th.